To the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, this is a special meeting and the last meeting of 2012. It's Thursday, December 6th at 2:00 p.m. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shire.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan is absent. Commissioner Tufanian.
Commissioner Vartanian.
Here.
And Commissioner Vidor.
Here.
Thank you. All present except Mr. Morgan.
Thank you. Item number two, the agenda for this meeting was posted on or before Wednesday, November 28th, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And item number three, approval of the meeting minutes from October 22nd, 2012. Are there any changes or comments?
I have a question. On 7A, listing of the properties, I don't remember which is which, but are all the five properties listed here those that have been finished? Or which ones are...
Yes, those are the finished properties.
Okay, not the ones granted extension?
Yeah, we have two, and the two that were granted extensions are partially complete. Aspects, certain conditions have already been met, but the full list hasn't been.
Could those be added to the minutes? Or is that not important?
I don't think it's important for this.
Okay. It's on our spreadsheet.
Yeah.
That we were given out last meeting. Okay, any other comments?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second. Who seconded?
Pardon? Okay, roll call, please.
Sure. Okay, Commissioner Vidor?
Yes.
Commissioner Tufanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Vartanian?
Yes.
Madam Chair Shire?
Yes.
Thank you. Vote four to zero to approve the minutes. Thank you.
Okay, agenda, item number four, oral communications when we have none today. So we'll move to item five, comments from commissioners. Okay. Quiet meeting. And then we'll go on to six, old business. Consideration of Commissioner-generated proposals for future discussions regarding the HPC policies and goals.
We have no new items on our chart. Agendized discussions about historic district fees, but as you'll learn, it's going to be a very brief discussion, but it'll then be continued to a future hearing, so.
Okay, thank you. Seven, new business. A, 341 West Doran Street. This is a Glendale Register nomination and a Mills Act contract application.
Okay, I'll introduce the project, and then Charles Loveman from Heritage Housing Partners will be able to discuss the project in greater detail. This is a very interesting project. It's a development that consists of 57 townhouse units geared toward moderate-income buyers. And then there are three historic Craftsman houses that were on the site, that were saved as part of the development, incorporated into the development, providing inspiration for the design details of the development. In addition to the 57 units, the project also consists of, there's a dedication of an area for a city mini-park on Doran Street. So these three houses you see at the top of the picture here, and at the lower portion of this rendering, are located on Doran Street, just to the west of Central. And here's a shot of some of the new work on the site for the new townhouse units. And the site consists of many kind of interior courtyards, so there's a lot of open space within the units or between the buildings, creating this kind of courtyard feel, and very, very nicely done. And I thought I had one, oh, okay, doesn't matter, as long as you understand the relationship. These are the three Craftsman houses, and we are going to be considering the two western most, 341 to the right and 343 at the center. GTV6 doesn't like that, so they might call.
After the presentation.
Okay. Oh, that's right, they're showing the presentation already. So the first house you'll be considering, and because these are individual nominations, we'll consider them individually, just so you know, and I hope you've had a chance to visit the site, that they're part of this project, so I won't reintroduce the project for the second house. 341 West Doran was built in 1911. We don't know the designer, we don't know who the first occupant was. It was built for Mr. Pig, so we always like these names in Glendale. And it went through a series of ownerships over the years. Most interestingly, in 1959, it was bought by a man whose name is escaping me, but I'll find it in a second. Jerry, or Mr. Perry. Where did it go? Joseph Perry. And it looks like he was land banking. He was a hotel developer, so he assembled these three parcels. We don't know if he was interested in other parcels, and they sat in their, you know, decaying condition for many, many years. They had very large backyards, so it was a very big lot, and that's why it was interesting for development. If Mr. Perry had developed it, I can say with some certainty that we probably wouldn't have the three houses that were there. Heritage Housing is a different type of developer focusing on historic preservation-based developments, and so as part of their project, these three houses were always going to be maintained on the site. I'll just run you through the visuals of the facades. Here we have the front facade. What I'm going to do is show you the existing condition, and then we'll do the before-and-after comparisons to see how things were changed. In any rehabilitation, aspects of a building are likely to be changed. The extent of those changes is something you'll be thinking about today in your discussion. This house had a full-width front porch originally that had been enclosed at an early date, probably in the 1920s, and the porch was restored, so now we have a full-width open porch again. Wood clavert siding, all of the siding on both of the projects today, as well as the third. And I should note that the third house is in escrow right now, which is why you're not considering it. The ownership change would have likely occurred between the commission hearing and City Council affirming the hearing or your decision, and that we would have to start all over again with new ownership and a new nomination filed, so we decided it was best to wait for that nomination. The brick piers at the front were reused from portions of the brick that was under the original porch that had been enclosed. As you go around the house, wherever there were historic windows, they were restored and reinstalled. So this is the side of the house at the top, the rear of the house at the bottom. And this is where you can really start making your comparisons between what was done for this project. So on the left of the top picture, you can see this is the area that would have been an open porch originally. The only aspects that were left indicating where the piers were were in this kind of cement raised up on the brick foundation. So it was clear that there were piers here that held up the roof and supported the porch opening, but none of the piers or columns were left in the wall. Sometimes when someone encloses a porch, they keep those things, in this case, they didn't. So you can see the open brick porch now. The fenestration is more or less the same. These kind of French window casement windows were retained, and the idea was that, there was speculation that they may have been an original or early window on the house, that when they enclosed the porch, would have been brought forward in an opening of the same size. And as you can see on the right, where there were four windows, the architects decided to do two based on interior space usage rather than having the full four windows. These windows are not typical of Craftsman houses. They don't jump out at me as like completely wrong, but they may not have been the original windows to the house, but they could be an early change. They could date to the time of the porch enclosure, we're not sure. One of the biggest changes is the raising of the roof, which occurred on all three of the houses that you'll be reviewing ultimately, and both of the ones you have in front of you today. This was done in large part because two of the houses have second-story unit or second-story rooms that were added in the attic space, and to make those spaces usable, they did need to raise the roof a certain amount. We think, we haven't measured it, but we think it might be 18 inches or so. This house did not, does not have a second upstairs unit or rooms, and never did. This house was raised to keep the aesthetic of the row kind of intact, rather than keep this one as a shorter house between the two taller houses. You can see the before-and-after of the side. Diamond pane windows are still intact and restored. The rear facade is close to what was there. One window that you can see here next to the rear door was removed. On this side of the house, very, very close to its original appearance, this bump-out is an original feature, and it's a feature on most, or at least many Craftsman houses. It's kind of interesting that you see it on so many of them. It's often in the dining room, sometimes it's on bedrooms. And then you can see in the lower photograph that the chimney had been cut off and capped at some early date, and the decision was made to not restore the chimney and to rebuild the roof over what was, where the chimney would have penetrated through the eve. The knee brackets were kept in place. The siding condition, when the work began on the project, it appeared to be deteriorated. There was concern about its condition, as well as the way it looked, so the decision was made to replace all of the siding. This can be justified under the Secretary of the Interior standards as replacement-in-kind. The reveal of the claverts is the same as what was there originally. New wood was installed, and it comes close, very close to looking like the original claverts, especially after a little time gives the wood a chance to soften, so. Oh, I'm sorry. And then I just wanted to also show the, you know, the restoration of the diamond pane windows. And that's everything I have for 341. Would you like me to show 343 also, or would you like to discuss them individually?
I think together.
Okay, then we'll just have to vote on them separately.
Yeah.
Okay, 343 has an identical development history. The land was bought by Mr. Pig, went through many owners over the years, the same hotel developer owned this site, and the house is similar to the other house. These are all kind of real straightforward Craftsman houses. They're all of the typology with the full-width front porch that was sheltered by the roof, where many other types of Craftsman have a porch that's kind of a secondary gable that comes forward from the main body of the house. So this is a distinct typology, and all three houses had it from the beginning. So here you see the open porch. Again, the roof was raised this amount, this roof level would have rested on this beam originally, and you can see the second-floor windows here, and we'll see more of that. In this photo, you can see the insertion of the new windows is a relatively modest insertion. It's very typical of things that happen over the years to houses like this with a pitched roof and decent amount of attic space. Again, we see the bump-out on the side here, the knee brackets, and the new clavert, wood clavert siding, and the cast stone, concrete block porch supports are the original ones, which is always interesting. It always surprises me when I see that, but that's definitely an original type of masonry for Craftsman. There's another shot of the porch supports, the new fencing that separates the courtyard area and the common areas of the development from the street, done in a Craftsman style. Here's the rear facade, very simple. This house had a large rear addition that was removed as part of the project. Here are the before-and-after shots. One thing that you should note that I forgot to mention is that all three of the houses were moved approximately 10 feet forward toward the street on the site, and this had to do, and Mr. Loveman will hopefully explain it better than I can, but with some sort of GWP easement at the back of the site, that the whole project had to move forward, so these houses had to come with it. So they're all on new foundations, but all materials were reused as much as they possibly could. So here's the before-and-after. So in this case, you see the difference between where the porch roof starts here and where the roof is here. Other than that, it's very much identical to the early photographs. Window openings correspond to the historic window openings on both sides of the house. Another, oh, sorry, another chimney was capped rather than be rebuilt. And then on the back of the house, I don't know where those photos are. I had photos, and they were in this presentation, of the addition on the back.
We have them in our packet.
Yeah, they're in the packet, so. So that is everything I have for these two properties.
Did you want to go over staff recommendation or criteria, or are we here first from?
Staff is recommending designation or recommendation of designation under criteria five. This is the new Glendale Register criteria that were approved by City Council a month and a half ago. Criteria five states that a property exemplifies the early heritage of Glendale, and we are, we recognize how broad that is, because many, many properties could be said to do that. It's the commission's job and City Council's job to serve as a filter to prevent nominations coming through that you don't actually think merit designation on the Glendale Register. One of the goals of having this so broadly drawn, which was a recommendation from the State Historic Preservation Office, rather than to really narrow it down, they thought it needs to be broad, and then through staff, through commission, and through council, we can filter nominations. But one of the goals was to open up the possibility of properties acquiring the Mills Act contract to serve as an incentive to retain Craftsman properties or possibly other even earlier properties. We have kind of pre-C Craftsman transitional properties, we have some foursquare properties that are all very rare early examples of the built heritage of Glendale and how the city used to look. So the goal in this is to find ways to encourage owners of these houses to, rather than demolish them and build a new three- or four- or 57-unit rental or condo property on the site, to encourage them to find ways to creatively intermingle preservation with new development so that we could have this classic win-win situation of retaining these street-facing, you know, parts of the heritage. And this is, and especially, it's not exactly rare to say that we have three intact Craftsman bungalows on any street in Glendale, but there aren't that many places where you have three that, where none of them have been stuck it over or have other serious alterations. We'd love to see this used even for single properties, where someone might be able to develop if it was a deeper lot, possibly two units, depending on the zoning, in the backyard area, and still keep the Craftsman house that faces the street. But we're open to other possible uses of this criterion, so we don't want to limit the commission and its thinking of how to apply it, but we think in the case of the Doran Gardens project, this is a really appropriate use for something like this, and we hope that it could be somewhat presidential for other nominations in the future.
Thank you. I don't have a speaker card, but I assume you've come forward.
Fill that out afterwards.
Good afternoon, commissioners. How are you? My name is Charles Loveman. I'm the executive director of Heritage Housing Partners. Thanks for the opportunity to speak, and Jay, thank you for all your help in getting to this hearing today. Let me just say a couple of words about Heritage Housing Partners, and then I'll talk about sort of the whole history of the project from our standpoint. I don't know if you guys know anything about us. Heritage Housing Partners was founded in 1998 as an offshoot of Pasadena Heritage. We were actually founded as an initiative of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So we were, what do you call it, an affiliate of Pasadena Heritage, whose goal was to preserve historic buildings in Pasadena and do affordable housing. We, since 1998, we've sort of grown and expanded, so we're doing projects outside of Pasadena. Our legal relationship with Pasadena Heritage exists no more, although our value relationship exists, and we're still pursuing a mission of affordable housing, affordable homeownership housing, with historic preservation opportunities whenever and wherever we can find them, which is why we ended up as the developer of this project. Originally, this was a site with those three houses on it. The site to the east, where the park is at the south side of the lot, that actually was not, that came later to the site assemblage. So originally, the project, and we, this started in 2004 with the City of Glendale Housing Department. It was the half of the site, which was a full-acre site, with those three houses on them, as Jay said, about 10 feet further back from the street than where they are now. And they were three lots that went all the way from Doran Street to Pioneer Alley, so there were garages all the way back at Pioneer Alley. And the City Housing Department, if memory serves correctly, had identified this site for an affordable, as an affordable housing site. I think there were some issues about preserving those three buildings, and thankfully, the Housing Department of the City of Glendale found us. So the reason we were asked to take a look at this deal in the first place was because of the existence of those three properties and the fact that they had been determined eligible in a survey. And so we very, very much wanted to, we're thrilled to be doing this project, and we love the idea of preserving those three houses as part of the project, and taking our design cues for the rest of the project from those three houses. But there were certainly issues with keeping those houses as part of this project. I think the first issue was, we had three houses, and the one to the east, the one with the gray roof in that picture, actually has, title has transferred, so we have sold that. So depending upon the outcome of this hearing, we'll help that new home buyer come in and apply for Mills Act if we're able to get that for the two that we currently own. But so speaking about all three, the two on the end were basically, when you took off the nonoriginal additions, were basically two-bedroom units with a big, big attic. And so for us, the challenges and the economic cost of preserving those to get a two-bedroom house, which as a homeownership proposition isn't, in a detached configuration, isn't a great market rate opportunity. We needed to figure out how to occupy the attic and convert it to living space in order to make that an economic, those economics work. The house in the middle, we would have loved to do that, but it really didn't have the size of attic that the other two did, and it was a three-bedroom house, not a two-bedroom house, so that worked better from a market standpoint. The other big issue was the house-moving issue. At some point after we had designed the entire project and went into plan check, we were told by Glendale Water and Power that there was a high-tension, high voltage line, power line in Pioneer Alley, and we needed to move the entire project forward. I can't remember what the distance was, I guess about, pardon me, about 10 feet. So we, that's why the historic houses had to be picked up and moved. So there was, those were a couple of big challenges. What we capped in terms of rehabbing these units, we had to pick them up and move them, but we were very careful about, in the case of the middle house, 341, taking the brick from the foundation so we could use that brick for the piers, which, as Jay noted, had long since been gone, but so we, that brick in the piers is from the old foundations. The art stone in 343 was the art stone that we very carefully salvaged and reused, and although 339, the one to the east, is not, no longer owned by us, we saved the arroyo stone and redid the arroyo stone there. So we rebuilt the porches with the salvaged material. We kept the original windows in all of the houses and restored those, as Jay had pointed out, and any intact, any reusable doors and built-ins, we took great pains to reuse. So there were some original front doors, some interior doors, a couple of break fronts, some nice detail between the living rooms and the dining rooms, and there was a couple of pocket doors as well. What we changed, as Jay pointed out, we changed the siding, but once we, and we actually tried to reuse the siding, but the poor condition, the fact that there are so many holes and penetrations that had occurred with the siding, and then that was covered with lead paint, made that really a non-economic proposition, so we custom-milled red wood of the same profile. We did do some alterations to the floor plans to make the kitchens a little bit bigger, and then if you've been inside the houses, we replaced the wood floor, which we determined wasn't really able to be salvaged. And then the issue of the height and the roof was really the big, big challenge, and that was where our historic preservation goals met our economic goals of really needing to make the attic livable, into livable space for the two units on the end, and structural requirements that the building code imposed upon us. So just to give you an idea of what we had to do and how we had to incorporate it, for the houses on the end where we occupied the attic, the ceiling joists, so from the living room ceiling or the first-floor ceiling to the attic space were two-by-three joists, and the structural engineers required two-by-12. So we had to pick up nine inches of space to go, in order to support a live load now instead of just a dead attic space. And then the roof itself was two-by-fours, that they required two-by-tens. And we didn't fight on the two-by-tens initially, because we actually wanted to have 10 inches of space to put insulation in. So there was basically six inches on the roof that we had to make up somewhere, and there were nine inches in the ceiling joist that became the floor joist that we had to make up. So there's about 15 inches right there, and then we framed it out, and then we stood there and said, well, okay, is this really going to work? And I think we probably picked up another three to four inches just by wanting to make sure we could meet the building code's minimum height. So we probably ended up, I don't know exactly, but it's probably an 18-inch to possibly a 24-inch change, is my estimation of what we did. And we did that for the two units on the end, and again, most of that, if it was 18 inches, 15 of those 18 inches were structural, and then the other three to nine inches was to get a proper head height. And I don't know how many of you, I know some of you went in and went upstairs and saw how the closets are tucked into the eaves, and so it's still kind of funky, although it's great. We didn't do the framing on the middle house, the one that didn't have an attic that we were expecting to, that we wanted to reuse, until we finished the framing on the other two, and then we sort of stepped back. We had carefully photographed the relationships of all the roofs, and then we made a judgment call in the field to increase the roof height of the middle house, just to keep the relationship of the three roofs more or less the same to what it had been. So that's why we raised the roofs, and as I say, the structural requirements were accounted for most of that. I think that's really, oh, we did, we took great pains to keep the original roof slope, so we did keep the original roof slope. I think that's mostly what I want to say. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for your time.
Yeah, please stay. We probably have a few questions. Does anyone have questions for hand while he's here?
Well, I don't know if it's a question or a comment. I was reading the 2004 report that was done by Daniel Paul when the property was originally assessed, and I think it was when you started the project, and I thought it was really interesting, because he does mention also the landscaping, which appeared to be very interesting, and he makes the comment that "the sporadic mix of ordered trees and shrubs upon a flat lawn exhibit the qualities of a park from the 19th rather than 20th century. This landscaping is most rare, and combined with the relatively intact qualities of all three residences, provides a cohesive, I guess, cityscape for local landmark listing." But you, so was there, did you want to say anything about the decision to make the yards versus try to preserve the landscaping?
Well, I, my guess is that he's referring primarily to the long... Um, well, I, uh, my guess is that he's referring primarily to the long backyard that, that, um, was there, there certainly, there just wouldn't have been a project if we had, had to maintain the landscaping in those long backyards.
It was that they were common to all three houses, right?
Yeah, he comments that there were no fences between them, and that there was a trail that worked its way through the landscape along one boundary and some trees on the other.
So it just wasn't practical to...
The photos from that time don't look like a 19th century English park, though, so it's definitely, you know, there's a certain randomness to the way it looked.
I mean, I, my, I believe the, the lot width from Doran to Pioneer Alley is 300 feet. So those were 300-foot deep lots, and I, I may be mistaken, but I don't think, I, I, it sounds to me like that comment is about the landscaping in the backyards, which obviously, in order to have a project we couldn't preserve.
Could you speak to the site grading or level changes? It's looking as if the houses are raised more than they were originally, brought them forward.
Um, we actually took great pains not to do that, so I, I don't know if that the case, but we...
The, the, the current condition is at least 14 inches higher.
Yeah.
Uh, there are two steps on some of the old houses, four on the current.
Okay, well, um, then that was imposed on us by the grading plan.
I was just curious, it doesn't seem to make sense why.
Um, I can't speak to that.
Was there thought, when determining for economic reasons, that the roofs needed to be raised for the two-story homes, to relook at what a two-story craftsman home would look like, rather than just try to raise the roof? And it looks to me like it's much more than 18 inches. And now you kind of have this hovering, floating roof over an old craftsman-style home. Is there any thought to that?
Um, well, I, I guess we were trying to raise it as little as possible within the requirements of, of the head height and the structural requirements, and then to match the roof slope. So, uh, it sort of fell where it fell. I suppose if it had been a two-story house, we might, might have lifted it even more and made more of a presence about it in terms of the second floor.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and any thoughts and comments from the commissioners?
Thank you for the extensive restoration work that you've completed on 341 West Doran. It's obvious that you've paid special attention to the restoration of the house and to bring it back to its original state. Um, and having looked at your website, it seems like you've done a lot of projects, such as this, with a historic component. Um, I went to, I visited the site, and, uh, it looked beautifully done. Um, the poor, there were a few questions I had, or concerns that I had. Um, first, I wanted to address the porches and entrance, which are focal points of a building. And the before and after pictures did look quite altered, um, but it has been returned to its original state, it seems like, um, with the, uh, with the porch opening. Um, I do appreciate that many of the structure members, materials and windows were salvaged and reinstalled. Um, but the extent of rehabilitation was a little bit of a concern. For example, uh, the clapboard siding, and was it, um, possible maybe to preserve some of the sideboard, uh, the siding? But it seems like, I mean, uh, you did answer that question, Jay did go over that, and I think maybe to keep, um, to keep the sustain, oh, sorry. Replacement of missing features shall be sustained by documentation or pictorial evidence, which we do have, and we did see the before and after. Um, another concern I had was the height. Um, and the house also feels a little bit taller than the original home, and it has been more, moved forward 10 or 14 feet. The standards specify that exterior alterations or, um, or related new construction shall not destroy historic material that would characterize the property. That being said, the height does not destroy the character of the property, but it is a little bit of a concern. And, um, looking at the standards, I did not find, um, I did not find anything in the standard guidelines regarding raising, uh, the roof line. But I do, um, but I do see a reason for keeping them all, all even. Um, lastly, I think rehabilitation is defined as the process of returning the property to a state of utility through repair or alteration, which makes the, which makes possible an efficient contemporary use while preserving those, uh, portions and features of the property, which are significant to its historic architectural and cultural values. And I think the massing seems to work, um, and the homes are preserved, and it sounds like they're structurally more sound than they were. So, I believe that heritage housing was obvious, has obviously come, accomplished that goal, and I would support the nomination. So, thank you.
What Caroline just said, it reflects my thinking also. I really have been thinking a lot about this. Usually, um, after I've read the materials and visited the site, I have a pretty strong feeling about how I feel, and there's, this is so much more complicated, 'cause there's so many things at stake here. First of all, the work, I think the work you do is wonderful, and I think, I hope after all you've been through, you'd wanna come back and do more work in Glendale. Say yes, please. Because, you know, the, the bigger point here is that we have all these really spectacular little gems sitting around, especially in central and south Glendale, in clusters and as individuals, and they all have great potential. And you certainly, your firm has maximized the potential of these houses. And, so, you know, congratulations, and when you describe the amount of work you do, which is evident, and what it took, just, you know, to comply with everything, to be entitled and to get the work done, it's really remarkable, and, uh, you know, obviously you're very tenacious, otherwise you wouldn't have survived it. But, on the other hand, then, there's the issue of, um, and again, back to the 2004 report, um, which begins by saying, "The integrity, uh, historic integrity of a property is its ability to be able to convey its significance." When I walked up to the properties, and it's very, what I'm going to try to describe is very clear in the upper right-hand drawing, uh, depiction, picture there that's on, uh, on screen, is that the project was beautiful, certainly looked very craftsman-like, um, but because of the relationship of the porch overhang in the roof and how that has been rebuilt, and maybe it's a function of the materials and their newness, it looks, um, you know, like a, like the historic integrity and the ability to convey the fact that it's an early 19th, uh, 20th century building, somehow has been depleted to an extent that left me a little bit troubled, as far as coming right down on preservation of, of them as designated landmarks. Um, but then there are other things to consider. So, um, you know, I thought, "Well, is it the beveled clapboard? You know, it's not the old stuff, it's new, so it looks fresh," and, but then there are some angles, which are shown pretty nicely in those photographs, especially of the front porch, not so much on the side of the house, where you see, you know, elements of modernism, um, you know, the, uh, the angles, uh, and the way the, the rehabilitation has been done, that very much reflect the new construction in the back. There's a tremendous amount of beautiful integration there, which is, is nice. You know, you've got affordable housing and three market-rate houses, and they blend beautifully together. And so I'm still struggling with whether, uh, the, the restoration and rehabilitation has gone so far as to deplete the conveyance of a historic building. I don't know the answer. If you asked me to vote right now, I'd have to say, "Give me some," you know, I'm not done thinking about it yet, because I'm still weighing those two things. And if somebody can help get me there, one way or the other, so I want, I'm curious to hear what my colleagues have to say, and if anyone else wants to also make comments, please do. It's a very interesting dilemma.
So, I, are you, yeah, sorry.
I'm Julie.
No.
Go ahead.
No, I would agree, and, um, and I think I'm also, you know, struggling to, to a certain degree. I mean, certainly I appreciate that Criterion Five facilitates our ability to, you know, um, preserve the more vernacular style homes that reflect early Glendale. Um, and I really do appreciate what's been done with this development overall, and I think that courtyard-style development probably harkens back to earlier, um, multi-family types of dwellings, and, as you were describing, the description from earlier about sort of walking through a landscape, and I think we, we have that here to a certain degree. But speaking to the homes themselves, I think I'm also struggling, um, with, with the raised roof, for one. I mean, I understand the reasons completely. Um, and I think Commissioner Shire's question struck me in terms of, you know, was there a better way to, um, define that, maybe looking at other examples of two stories from the time? Excuse me. So, I don't know, I'm, you know, I do appreciate a lot of the original elements that have been retained, clearly, the original wood windows, those beautiful, um, um, what do we call those? The diamond-pane windows, um, the door, actually, are the doors original, or are those, um, yeah?
The, you mean interior doors are original?
Not interior.
The front doors are new?
Front doors are not, are they?
Front doors are new?
Those are new, okay. I mean...
Oh, excuse me. Is it on 339?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, some of the windows at the front of the house, I think it was the one in the middle, you could see where it was the original wood that had been sort of heavily caulked in, and it was sort of nice to see that. But again, I don't, when we're, when we're starting to look at these rehabilitations, um, I don't know how narrow we wanna look at some of the alterations. And so, I guess at this point, I'm a little on the fence as well, and I'd like to hear Commissioner Shire has to say.
Well, first of all, I want to applaud the developer, because I think he took a very, very difficult project and made it very, very successful. And, um, I understand your dilemma between historic preservation and economic terms, and how the project is gonna pencil out. And so I think that's where I'm caught. Absolutely, the developer should receive an award for this project. We want to, we want to reward people for doing projects like this in Glendale. On the other side, I have a real challenge with, are these two properties or homes, um, do they reach the level of designation? And so I think we've got a few things to talk about today, especially with the new Criterion Number Five, where it says, you know, "It exemplifies early heritage of Glendale." You know, Jay, as you mentioned, that's very broad. So we probably have discussions among ourselves, what is that? What should that be? Does this depict that? Is this, um, such a flexible criterion that it can mean anything we want, and we could designate it with specific, um, conditions or reasons to, you know, in order to do that? Or, does this project really not anymore depict the early heritage of Glendale because of the modifications of the homes? And my main concerns are, um, two things. The site level change, to me, takes away from the homes with the added two extra stairs in level. Uh, the raised roof, I would have preferred to see, um, if one home needed or did not need, for economic reasons, to have a raised roof in order to accommodate a second floor, to leave that one completely intact, restored beautifully, then maybe you would have gotten one designated property exemplifying exactly what the craftsman was and is to the property, and maybe the other two would or would not have been designated, not sure. Um, but I could have even seen it done that way with the other two. If a second story was determined to very successfully then turn those into a craftsman second story. As if a property was on the register and wanted to do a modification, and it came before us, then we would have had a chance to determine, how should that, you know, addition been made? How could it have been successfully done? 'Cause, uh, from a design perspective, I have a really hard time saying that this is right for a craftsman-style home, and that's really what's caught me up in, again, wanting to really commend the developer for a project like this, but not really, um, not really able to say that a historic designated property in a Mills Act application, or a Mills Act, um, application granted, is the way to do that for what I'm looking at here in the before and after pictures. But again, it's, it's really, really challenging, 'cause you've done incredible work, restoration, keeping the windows, replacing the siding, doesn't really affect me at all, actually, it's done very, very successfully. It's, yeah, this is a real, a real challenging, um, project for me personally, and obviously for some of the other commissioners. So, maybe we should talk about a few of those items, talk about the Criterion Five a little bit. Is there any other cities that have used Criterion Five in such a way that would be more to honor a development, yet not specific to designating resources individually? Do you have anything on that, Jay?
Well, Criterion Five is unique to Glendale. We should remember, it's very similar to our previous Criterion A, but we use that to talk about significant, properties that are significant in broad patterns of the heritage of the city, and always felt that that was a criterion that applied to the city halls and the post offices and other buildings of that type. Criterion Five, as, um, uh, one of our commissioners mentioned, is, opens things up to more vernacular buildings that are especially representative of the early years. I've never heard of, of designation in any city going to focusing on the current development rather than on the historic resource. I think you always have to focus on the resource first, but the way that it was preserved, and the reasons that it was preserved are also an important part of its story, and that's where the work of the developer or the owner who chooses to restore the, or rehabilitate them, and to accommodate other development, plays a part in the decision, and could be seen as another reason to encourage, like, perhaps set some precedent to encourage this type of development in the future. But I don't think you can ever step back from, is this really a historic resource that exemplifies the heritage of the city? And that's kind of the crux, I think, you're all experiencing.
I just have a quick question, um, sort of tangential. If, um, if a development like this is coming forward, and the developer knows that they want to apply for a Mills Act contract or historic designation, is it appropriate, or do we have, I mean, I'm gonna assume this went through regular, you know, design review DRB?
Mm-hmm.
And so, is there a process whereby it could come in front of this body prior to the rehabilitation, or is that something we wanna...
That would be a possibility. I, I was involved, to a limited extent, in reviewing this as things moved forward. So, for example, with the replacement of the siding, um, we talked about it, I was a little, "Oh, that's too bad, it's not really ideal," but Charles made the case that, "No, this has really deteriorated, it has led, it's, it's gonna increase costs." And, and we at the city were very aware that this is a project with a budget that has to be met, um, in order to meet everyone's... met in order to meet everyone's goals, including keeping it an affordable project. So we talked about in-kind replacement, they milled redwood to match the existing siding. Secretary of this Interior's Guidelines for Standards for Rehabilitation clearly allow you to replace materials on historic buildings, and all materials have a lifespan. So there aren't a lot of buildings that have 100% original anything. So we were okay with that. In the case of raising the roof, unfortunately, I wasn't involved in that, and, you know, I can't say that anything I would have said would have changed the outcome because there were other issues besides preservation involved in the decision making. That would be the ideal process, for the preservation planner to be involved, and there's also the possibility that a project could be brought to the commission just as an introduction and to see what the commission felt about it.
I don't know if we have to open up the hearing. I'd be interested to hear what Mr. Loveman has to say. Maybe you can answer it. I'm curious, when you look on the left, you know, the classic relationship of a gabled roof to a porch, and the fact that the roof overhangs the porch even if there's a second story, in an attic type second story. Why were we not able to replicate that relationship of the roof to the porch?
Simply for the reasons that Mr. Loveman stated. They, the building code required them to have structural members that were considerably larger than what was there.
The angle of the roof would have had to have changed then, but it could have been done with a changed angle.
If they had changed the angle of the roof, it would have been even less appropriate to the craftsman style. It would have brought it back to a more Victorian, very steeply pitched, almost like Tudor.
Yeah, Tudor.
Or lengthening the roof.
You would have had to bring out the entire porch to get that.
Yeah, you would have had to change the footprint of the house to get the...
Yeah, you would have to build out the house, right.
The rock and the hard place kind of thing.
Right.
So I guess the question I'm still asking myself is, when I walk down this street and look at these homes, what extent does it really reflect what a streetscape might have looked and felt like in 1911 or, you know, during that time period? And does this really, does this grouping really embody that? Aside from, you know, I mean, again, I'm also struggling with the middle house raising, you know, that sort of step back to look at how the three work together and just making that decision to raise the roof there so that they would all be at the same height, I guess is what you said. And I think on a typical streetscape, you really wouldn't have that. You know, you really would have that, every house being built individually and, do we need to? You know, so that's just, yeah, I don't know if we're going to reopen the hearing or maybe we want to, we'll call you up.
We'll have a chance for rebuttal at the end of the comments.
So, you know, for me, I think leaving the house probably its original height would have been a little more, could have better exemplified what might have really existed on a regular street at that time.
Yeah, that's really my thinking. We could have had one completely originally truly restored, you know, residence left and then a development that went very well with that and had to make the changes for economic reasons. But really, when you choose economic development reasons over historic preservation, there's always going to be a little bit of a clash. So I think our job here today is to look at the Criterion and decide, do these two properties, if they came to us individually, you know, are they worthy of the historic designation? Well, maybe there's some other, you know, award, reward, whatever, to a developer who is very, very conscientious about the properties and developments of which we want to encourage, but is this the way to encourage them? It's a difficult spot.
I feel as though I, in the discussion, I, in my mind, eliminated the importance and gravity of the in-kind replacement, because there's a lot of in-kind replacement going on here, and that was hanging me up, but really, that's not the issue at all. I think that my fellow commissioners brought nicely into focus that the issue is the elevation and the porch roof relationship and the fact that, you know, one of these houses at least was dramatically altered to make it uniform with the others. And so, still stuck, still considering the significance in larger part, you know, the whole greater than the sum of its parts or not. Still thinking about it, but I think you've captured what the issue is here. What do we do about 341?
Any more discussion? Is there a motion that someone wants to?
You can open up the public hearing for the applicant to rebut or to offer information.
Can I ask one more quick question? I think was it suggested in the reports that one of these was a kit house or 343, maybe?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have any real knowledge of that.
It was just a suggestion.
A lot of early craftsman houses were kit houses. Unless you went in, some kit houses had marks on the different members burned in or paper tags stapled to the wood, and I think you would have, they would have seen that when they were exploring the attics and everything, so, but it still could be, even if it didn't have those markings.
Okay, well, reopen the public hearing. Need to come forward.
Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate your careful deliberation of this. If I could just respond to some of the things. You know, the notion of making it a full, the two houses on the end, making them full two-story houses, I'm not sure, I mean, honestly, that never really crossed my mind because I felt like then that would have totally changed the way those houses looked on the street. I mean, I've been happy to do it if I had have thought of it and if the city had encouraged that, because that's a lot more floor area than what we ended up with. But we tried to basically keep the height as low as possible and the roof, you know, I also could have, as Jay said, changed the pitch of the roof to meet at the beam of the front porch, but we wanted, our priority was to minimize the height increase and keep the roof pitch the same. In terms of the middle house, you know, I appreciate the notion that we shouldn't have done anything to that and left that alone, but I'll tell you, if I was in the field making that decision again, I probably would make the same decision. Because when we looked at the three houses, and I repeat myself, that we photographed everything carefully, and they all weren't at the same height, but there was a relationship of, sort of the massing of the three, and so I just felt aesthetically, and that was my call, right or wrong, that we needed to have the massing sort of speak to each other. Otherwise, you'd have something that definitely felt, it might have been historically accurate, but it would have felt out of scale to the other two. I would just ask in closing, you know, we've waited a long time for the ordinance to be changed, knowing that with regard to Criterion Five, that was our best shot of being determined historic resources for the city. These were not great resources, they weren't intact, these weren't, these were just, you know, pretty typical craftsman houses from the period. They had been altered, they, you know, the two on the ends had, you know, horizontal additions that we removed to go back to the, these would have been changed over time. You know, it's certainly arguable that somebody would have said, hey, let's convert the attic to living space, and they would have done what we did in 1935. This is what we encounter all the time in what I call historic small H buildings, where we're trying to bring them up to code, we're trying to make them really livable and contemporary in terms of how the floor plans work, and we're trying to respect the historic character. We did the very, very best that we could. We really want the historic designation and the Mills Act designation that hopefully goes with that. I appreciate the dilemma that you guys are trying to solve, but I really ask that you take as liberal a view of Criterion Five as you can because it's important for us. I mean, if we, if I had known that we weren't going to get an historic designation, I don't know that we will, won't, but if somebody had said, you know what, these houses are in historic period, we wouldn't have gone to this trouble. So I hope you take that into account, and thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, public session closed. Any further comments or discussions after that?
Well, I have, I have another question for Jay. And I guess I was having the same thought. Clearly, you've looked at many, many, many more historic homes over the years of your career than I have, but have we ever, or have you ever seen this type of a articulation when, you know, an upper level...
The porch roof?
Yeah.
No, I've never seen, one of the aspects of craftsman that is important is that the timber members, whether they're real structural or faux structural, look like they're supporting the building. You see the structural exoskeleton of the building to some degree, and in this case, you still see that. You have, you have the timber supported by the posts at the front of the porch, but it's holding up a section of wall and then the roof, and that's what you don't typically see. It's still relaying the structural aspect that's typical of craftsman, but it adds an element that I don't think I've seen.
Well, I just wanted to, comments to the commissioners about, I think this developer, though, if the mission of the developer's standpoint is, you know, preserving and being sensitive historically, then they would have, I would sure hope, have done this irregardless of our decision today. So if they're doing the right thing, because it's doing the right thing, then the historic designation and Mills Act is a bonus, it's on top of that, it's in their blood. I'm hoping, if from what I heard correctly, that this is the type of development they do because this is their passion. Because if what the developer said is true, then they wouldn't have taken this level of care if they would have known there's even a potential that they wouldn't receive the designation, then I surely would have thought Jay would have been involved earlier in a decision as critical as changing the entire roof element, massing, shape, craftsman, I mean, something that's really known to craftsman style, where, you know, the roof and the beam meet in the porch. So I have a little difficulty kind of reconciling that. And I think as a designation itself, I still have a challenge saying that these two homes coming before us today are worthy of a designation in how they look today, because I personally would not have approved that type of a major alteration. As I looked, I was looking through the, our definitions from our, from the municipal code, and this is major alteration, you know, means that the alteration to a structure on the site which does not conflict with the historic integrity of the historic resource. So to me, there's a conflict. Although, as I say, I applaud the developer for his amazing care and sensitivity and doing the right thing and getting very, very successful development. That's where I'm left.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everything you've said, and again, we do want to, to reward and, I think, encourage, and we'd like to see more of this type of development, certainly. And so as we're trying to work through all of this with a new Criterion, do we, are we a little more flexible about our decision as we sort of walk down this path in an attempt to continue, you know, projects of encourage other developments that are this sensitive and take this level of care? But I would agree that at some level, with all of the planning that was done in anticipation of a designation, it does seem like just that one element of getting our preservation planner a little more involved in a very significant change just makes me contemplate why that, you know, step wasn't taken. I'm, I don't know.
Yeah, you know, what's really interesting about this is that we're talking about the way we've revised our ordinance and we have, you know, a broad reflecting heritage of the city provision here, which is perfectly great, and the fact that it's general is fine, but I don't even think that's the issue. You know, we're talking here, the thing that's hanging all of us up now, we've really narrowed it down, is some modifications that have been made that really are, you know, questionable in terms of the reflection of the integrity of the original structure, which no matter what we do to our ordinance, is still a basic tenet of historic preservation. And also, you know, we have a lot of knowledge from our survey that was done in 2007 and from our award-winning design guidelines about what the defining features and characteristics of a craftsman house is. So, you know, the fact that we were trying to, you know, set it a great example within the scope of Criterion Number Five really isn't the issue here. These are, the hangup that we're having is a very basic issue around the standard rules of looking at what makes a property designatable or not. So what troubles me a little bit is, you know, all this stuff has been going on for quite a long time, and obviously with our ordinance written the way it is and the potential to redevelop a lot of other nice, maybe borderline craftsman houses that exist in Glendale, do we have the process in place to really handle this correctly? I, you know, I'd like to understand how it all has played out, and somebody, I think Lorna had mentioned, you know, something of this magnitude where there's that much of a discrepancy between the way an original house looked and the way it played out eventually, that why couldn't it and shouldn't it have come here as a review item early on? And, you know, there's a tremendous amount at stake here. So it's really, I don't see it as have anything, having anything to do or too much to do with Criterion Number Five and the generalness of that provision. I think it's more just a basic digression from craftsman style house design guidelines. And I don't know where to put that, you know, are we setting a precedent here for something? Are we saying that, you know, well, you know, we all feel kind of bad, I think. I do personally. All this wonderful work has been done, which is a very big source of pride for me personally and everybody else in Glendale. Obviously, Heritage Housing Partners went to tremendous effort to see this beautiful thing through, and they were expecting this. So where was the disconnect then? And I think we really need to go back and look at that. That doesn't solve the problem about whether we're going to designate it or not, but there's a really bigger issue at stake here, and it's process related.
Well, I just want to comment there because I think we need to defend staff. Right now, the policy is not that it comes before our commission, it goes through Design Review Board.
Right, exactly.
Staff was not even aware of the roof modifications that the developer decided to do on their own in the site or in the field. So no, I mean, the developer didn't give anyone here in the city a chance to take a closer look or for Jay to say...
Well, to be fair, the plans did go through the process. I didn't personally look at them at that stage, but other staff did and, you know, didn't see that as an issue, which probably I would have caught.
Yeah.
And was there an understanding or was it brought out publicly at one of the hearings that the developer intended to and wished to apply for designation at a later...
Yes, we've known for over two years and longer, I think, that there was an interest in designation. The houses in their earlier condition were nominated, and I didn't see the possibility of individual designations for those houses in that condition at that time. of individual designations for those houses in that condition at that time. So the discussion was that let's look into other ways. And so we had many in-house conversations. I had conversations with the State Historic Preservation Office and some colleagues, thinking about how are there, how can we find ways to encourage solid development that has a great preservation component? And slowly whittled it down, you can't just give the Mills Act because you want to. You can only use the Mills Act for designated properties at the local level, state or national level. And that's how we kind of started our thinking in terms of looking at the criteria. Originally, we weren't even going in that direction, so we explored a lot of different paths.
And the houses, I looked at the survey, the 2007 survey, and there were, well, a lot of houses, and several of them in this class of house where you're like, you don't know whether it's designable or not. There were three on West Doran and three on East Doran, but these three houses were not included in the survey, which I thought was interesting and-
I did find out why that happened. It was because we had the Design Aid Architects Study for these three houses that was commissioned by the applicant. So what we try to do when we're sending people out on a survey is not to resurvey.
Okay, so there was already data.
Unfortunately, the conclusion in the Design Aid survey is kind of a non-conclusion. It identified that the three buildings as a program, which is a quote, in conjunction with their landscaping, which may have been a more important feature of the site than the houses themselves, was eligible for local listing. Unfortunately, at that time and still, we don't have a designation for a program of buildings. It seems like he was, the author was trying to work between individual and historic district and trying to find a way. So we didn't treat that ultimately as an official determination of eligibility. We didn't really have that category. Looking at the houses, now that I know the craftsmen survey really well and can kind of pinpoint where houses would go, I think all three of these houses would have been the six L category, which is where so many of our good vernacular houses went that just didn't quite rise to the level of being obvious candidates for the Glendale Register. And again, that's a real background for why we wanted to figure out a way to expand the criteria to bring properties like that into play, at least for discussion.
Can I? Go ahead. I'm wondering if part of the issue of the height being a bigger concern, or a big concern, is that when you look at the house, a lot of the things are new. The roof is new, the siding is new, the front door is new, the porch is new, the lighting, I assume, is new. So I wonder if all those combined with the height make it a bigger concern?
For me personally, no.
For me, it actually went the other way. I felt that, yeah, you could put them all together and say, "Too much," but that that was less important, as, you know, materials do age, than the physical alterations, not so much the in-kind replacements. That didn't bother me as much after we discussed it, but the physical alterations, especially the roof-porch relationship and the elevation, started to seem in conflict with our, you know, what our ordinance asks us to do or to consider.
So I'm just going to throw out the Good House as a historic property that's built in sort of the same type of development, and I'm not sure how that process went forward. Was the house designated as part of the overall development, or was it first or second, or...
It's one of our earliest designations. I don't actually know which came first.
I believe it was already designated, was restored to be part of the-
And it had been previously moved. It wasn't on its original site either. I don't know if it was moved again as part of this project. Almost positive, no.
So I guess we do, I guess what I'm kind of getting at is we do have a property that it's sort of in a similar situation that has not been altered.
Yeah, the skin of that house, to my knowledge, has not been altered, the exterior features.
Well, go ahead.
No, no. Well, I was just going to follow up on, I think, what Desiree had brought up, that one of the questions is if this property were brought before us today, would we approve that particular alteration in terms of how, you know, the second level was expanded and we have that 24-inch, whatever you want to call it there. And then I guess at some level, I have to contemplate that, I mean, I know this is what you do and you do it well, but I would think that the architects doing the drawings would have some idea of what, you know, would be appropriate for craftsmen homes.
Well, I think it, I think what it came down to is, as the developer said, you've got historic preservation clashing with economics-
Economics, right.
You know, and the penciling out of a project.
Right.
I completely get that.
I get that, too.
It happens all day long. So that's where the tough choices have to be made, and obviously, they made the choice that was most important to them, and it's for us to decide, is that what's important to us? So do we have a motion for or against, and the vote will tell, or is there more discussion? I think we can discuss all day.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll get any new material.
The vote might say something, I don't know.
And just keep in mind that your vote is advisory to City Council, so this can still move forward to City Council, and Council could designate and authorize the Mills Act
I just want to make sure that we don't discourage other developers, homeowners, of going through this extent and doing this kind of rehabilitation and then, you know, bringing a home to this level. So I really think that we need to keep that in mind as well.
Would you like to make a motion?
Nope.
We'll have to have ultimately two separate motions.
Yeah, okay. So we'll look at 341 first.
So are we moving to?
The motion is for or against, someone's got to bring it to the table besides me. And then you'll vote.
Well, I feel like that I would support, even though at first look, I felt like it was a newer home with all the changes, and the height was a big concern, but I think that I would support because I would want to encourage rehabilitating older homes rather than tearing them down and building new homes, so.
So your motion would be-
Would you like to make a motion?
So I move that I would support going ahead with the 341 West Doran.
Let me, since I, I'm sorry, I forgot to give you the motion, so I'll just read it out loud and you can go with that. But the motion would be to recommend that City Council vote to designate 341 West Doran Street as a Glendale Register property and to approve entering into a Mills Act contract with the owner. That's your motion.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
New motion?
Is there a new motion then on the table?
What would the other, what would the-
Not recommend.
What motion to not approve? I will make that motion as stated.
Is there a second?
I second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Midor?
No, I mean, yes.
Commissioner Bartanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Topengian?
No.
Madam Chishier?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails to pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say, yeah, yes.
You're correct, fail to pass.
Oops, I flipped.
Okay.
Next property?
Uh, I'm sorry, yes, so, same, well, we have to, is there any point in entering affirmative motion?
I'm sorry.
Probably not. We would, we would look for a motion to recommend that City Council not designate 343 West Doran Street and to not enter into a Mills Act property contract with the property owner.
移到了
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bartanian?
Yes.
Commissioner Midor?
Yes.
Commissioner Topengian?
Uh, no.
Madam Chishier?
Yes.
Motion failed to pass, 3031, thank you.
Thank you.
Give me a call.
Okay, next on our agenda today for new businesses, 7C, review of options regarding establishment of tiered fee structure for historic district applications.
This will be the brief discussion. We started the internal consideration of possible fee tiering for historic district applications, and it turns out it's opening the proverbial can of worms. It's a little more complicated. We usually base our fees on kind of a rational system of how the city can recoup a large amount, if not all, of staff expenses for the work. We were realizing that in many ways, there are the same number of public meetings, the same number of many aspects of the historic district process, whether you're a two-house district or a thousand-house district. Some of the big cost differential comes in mailings, because we have several mailings
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 8A, update regarding City Council discussion of the proposed changes to the GMC Glendale Municipal Code 2.76 and 15.20.
Last month, we took the code revisions for the Historic Preservation Commission Code, which is 2.76, and for the Historic Preservation Code section, which is 1520, to council, and we came away with new ordinances approved. It took 30 days for them to go into effect, and so they are now officially in effect. It was a very interesting council hearing, though, because there was real deep concern on the part of one council member at least, and only four were present that night, about the provision to allow City Council to designate a property even if the owner doesn't object. There was concern that this commission was going to go crazy and start accepting nominations for almost anything, but the real concern was that the council would start, you know, designating, you know, properties left and right. And so our Nargarion ended up voting against it based on that concern. Other council members recognized that we had built in a pretty solid filtering system in that the nomination had to be presented by, or approved by four, not the nomination, just the nomination itself. Four out of five council members had to approve it, then it would go through the regular nomination process, council, or Historic Preservation Commission would make its recommendation, then it would go back to council and need another four-fifths vote. So I think ultimately, many, most of council people got that we're not trying to take away people's property rights and that this was a provision that was only expected to be used in the most extreme circumstances where a building of special, unique importance to the city might be threatened and the council's designation might be able to help prevent something bad from happening. So, it was an interesting hearing.
Yeah, very interesting.
I was in the audience, and you know, Commissioner Shire spoke for the commission, and, you know, I have to say that I really, you know, sometimes long council meetings go on and on and you're like, oh, just, but the discussion was really interesting, and obviously, council member Nargarion felt very strongly about it.
Spoken Russian.
And he even spoken Russian, yeah.
Well, waving the flag.
Right. But, you know, I thought that council members Friedman, Quintero, and Weaver really gave very balanced, thought-provoking arguments, you know, they kind of weighed the pros and cons publicly and really got their thinking out, and I really appreciated, as many do, I think, that they took the long view on what was important to do. So I'd just like to publicly thank them for their very careful consideration.
I had a thought on that, you know, because it was quite controversial, a lot of discussion, that maybe we encourage as much as we can the Glendale Historic Society, that if they know of properties or buildings that are so significant, or so historically significant to Glendale, that they proactively speak to those owners or encourage the process coming forward, so we're not ever put in a place where a precious building is going to, about to be demolished and City Council needs to come in and make a ruling, you know, taking that part of the code.
And I know they do that in some cases. I don't know if they have a regular program of doing that, but they've definitely talked to property owners and-
So that might be also a way to, you know, make sure we're proactive in those resources that are really important to us rather than waiting till the very last minute and then having to be in that situation.
Yeah, and even-
At least we have it if we need to.
Yeah, and even while I was drafting that, I was like, I can't really think of the building that's going to trigger this, but we have it if we need it, so.
Okay.
There have been some in the past, in the last decade-
Sure.
-and at that level, so.
Yeah.
Okay, 8B, an update regarding the Brand Library Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, I just wanted to show you some interesting pictures of what's going on at the Brand Library. It's under wraps. I've been involved in the process, I'm a part of the, I'm not on every meeting, they have weekly meetings, but as issues come up that relate to preservation aspects of the site, I'm going to be involved. This is just a shot I took in the original dining room that used to be the kind of reading room, the kind of the big tables in the middle. So if you see these wood, I don't know if the lights are helping you, I guess on the monitor behind you, it's probably better. These are wood boxes, there were those beautiful columns and the kind of filigree woodwork above forming an arch. So these are the protection boxes that were built out around that during the duration of the work. So everything to my eye looks like it's going very well. This is the solarium that's going to turn into the kind of the heart of the library, where the circulation, or I'm sorry, where the reference desk is. This is the backside of the chimney for the fireplace that's in the parlor. And these were formerly walls, so we're looking toward the former main entrance, and these are the areas that were formerly just walls, but even before that, before the library conversion, were actually windows that opened onto the solarium and brought light into the front entry parlor. The commission approved, and everyone has thought it was a good idea to change circulation, to turn these into doorways rather than restore them as windows, but just so you know, these openings were already in the wall historically. The focus of my involvement lately has been, one more shot that just shows, this is where the connector is going to be built. So they did take away a section of plain wall. What was interesting is I had no idea, maybe it's in one of the documents that I never read carefully enough, that the walls are all of stone construction with stucco applied over it, and I just didn't expect that. So you can see how they took the wall out all the way up to the decorative cornice, but they're preserving that element, and you see here the eve of the new recital hall and gallery building. So the connection, you know, obviously will span between these two areas. So that was kind of interesting to see. And then this is what came after the cottage cheese was taken off the ceilings. So what they discovered was that the original decorative painting was still there. They also discovered that the ceilings were in really bad shape. So what is ultimately going to happen is the decorative work was documented, completely documented with photographs, multiple, I think, in the thousands of photographs. What you see here is us going out on the site visit, and this guy has purified water that he's spraying on the plaster because- we would see, like, all of a sudden, a face or sort of a face would appear, and it was really fun to watch them do this. This was during the period where they were concerned about asbestos, so they only had the building open to us for a real short time. Turns out there was no asbestos in the plaster, so it's a safe condition. So ultimately, all of this plaster is going to come down, and new drywall, sheet rock will go up that's going to follow the coves of the ceiling, and this is a budget concern. There's no one who was going to be able to replaster the ceiling within the library's budget, so the decorative detail, the decorative painting is going to be replicated on the new ceiling. Not an ideal situation, but it's appropriate for the building. I think we're lucky that we even were able to see what was there after we took the cottage cheese off. Here's a detail of one of those. This is one of the things that ended up looking kind of like a face. We thought there might be a man on one side and a woman on the other, but there was some really cool stuff. What we asked for from the constructor, the project team, was that some of these be retained so that we would have a record of what had been up there, and they actually went beyond what they said they were going to do under their contract. So this is an example of one of the pieces that was cut from the ceiling and then was attached to a new concrete substrate, and they put them in these cool wood boxes with styrofoam, so everything's safe. And then, once the library is kind of up and running, there's going to be some display vitrines made, so it's very cool. So here's a nice bird, and here's some nice grapes leaves, and I can't remember, there were, I think, six panels that they took down. Originally, they said they would only be able to do two, and I think they kind of got excited about it and did a little more. So we're going to have those, so people will be able to see the ceiling in the condition that it was found, and then they've done extensive, and this is a Spectra Corporation working with Offenhouser McKeel, who are the preservation architects on the project, which is being run jointly by Offenhouser and Gruen, and Spectra has been doing a lot of paint matching to try to kind of figure out what was the paint scheme in each room, and each of the three, or the four historic rooms, which are the main entry parlor, the two parlors to the side, and then the dining room, are the areas that are going to be, that the commission approved to be restored to their original or close to their original appearance. Each of those rooms had a different color scheme, and then within each room, the color scheme was graded, so it would go from lighter to medium to darker, so it was kind of this really nice effect. So you can see how careful they've been trying to match. They have actual ceiling samples on the boards, and then they have paint samples that they're trying to match. And then here are two of the initial mockups, and this isn't going to be the final final. This was when there were some discussions about budget, and this is the lower budget option, and this is the higher budget, where you get the additional colors and the sense of three dimension, and the team is going to go forward with this option. And then there was discussion about the brightness of some of the colors, and the idea that in the Brands' Day, lighting levels were much lower than they are in a contemporary library setting. So the palette is going to be softened to some degree, so it's going to vary in technical terms from the original palette, but visually, hopefully, it's going to be closer to the original palette. So it's a pretty complicated process, but everyone was looking at this and saying, it looks like we're in good hands, and you can see from the other photos, it's really complicated. There's a lot of stuff going on, and the plan is to bring all of that back, so it's an exciting project, yeah.
Thank you.
So Jade, do you know the timeline and when they expect to reopen the building?
I think 2014.
Oh, okay.
I can't remember if it's spring or, I'm not actually sure.
A while.
Well, we can try and find that information out.
Okay.
The next commission meeting.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Okay, the last item is 8C, review of commissioner assignments for nominations of several own, city-owned properties to the Glendale Register.
And basically, I took the list from when we discussed this a couple months ago and have given you official assignments in print. I took the liberty, I had on my list for the El Miradero, the gateway.
Yes.
I had Commissioner Shire and Vertanian on that jointly.
Correct.
And then I thought the Brand Family Cemetery is, are both kind of smaller nominations than some of the others, so I thought either you could do those together or individually, if that's okay. Municipal Services Building, we already have a first draft written by one of our preservation interns, who's in the house today, Eileen Babachani, who's joining us.
Thank you.
So that's the first one officially moving forward.
Yes.
And then some members of the Historical Society, both the Glendale Historical Society and the Historical Society of the Crescent Valley, have stepped up to take care of a few of these. So Glendale Historical is looking at Grandview Branch Library, and also Dunsborough Park, jointly with Mike Lawler from the Crescent Valley Group. Commissioner Mike Morgan, who is part of all of those groups, I think, plus on the commission, is going to do the Spar Heights Community Center. Commissioner Vidor has volunteered to do the Heritage Garden Bungalow, and the gas station, we already have someone who's a very good writer, from what I've been told, who's with the Historical Society, who's going to do the Adams Square Station. But the only thing missing is the Central Library right now. We've talked to the library, there was some talk that some of their staff might be interested in doing it, so I have to pursue that a little more, so we can leave that blank for a while, since everyone has work to do, so.
Great, thank you.
Except for Commissioner Tufankian.
Yes.
Who might want to, since I'd rather leave the Central Library open right now, if you wanted to...
Carden up with anyone.
Team up with someone.
Eileen? I'll help you.
Okay.
I'm good.
Excellent.
Perfect.
Okay, then I have one surprise, unagendized, but it doesn't really need to be agendized, section of the show.
Okay.
Commissioner Bartanian knows about this, but, oh, I know what happened.
What is item?
My changes didn't save, because I'd written something on, no, I think they're here. Yeah, they're here, but I had written something else here because, and now I can't remember, it's the Catherine, Richard Berry, who are the couple who donated? The Barrys.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth.
Richard and Elizabeth Berry.
Richard and Elizabeth Berry.
Own Rossmoine the Superb, maybe you've probably seen it, Commissioner?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so what they did, this is a bound book with original black and white photographs of Rossmoine in the earliest parts of its development, and they offered it to the Glendale Public Library to scan, but the library now has all of those images scanned. They've shared them with me, so we have them here in our archive. Their website for this is now, it's not easily publicly accessible, so I was going to put it up, but I decided to wait until I see what they're going to do, but we'll definitely put a link to it on our website once they have it in a good place. But I wanted to show you a selection of the photos, which might be best on the screen back here, because they're beautiful black and white shots that I wish we had had when we were going through the designation process, but...
The cars.
Because this one really makes, this one really makes the sign, you know, I get the sign. Sometimes before, I was like, it looks like they just kind of wrote on the photograph, but here, here you see it's the real deal. You see the orange groves.
Do you know which street that was?
What's that?
Do you know which street that was?
No, but I...
Hillcroft.
That's Hillcroft?
Hillcroft.
Okay, there was another one that I thought was Hillcroft. On the right, we have Nibley Park. On the left, we have, I don't know, Hillcroft?
No, I think that's...
It looks like Hillcroft.
It's between Rossmoine and Greenbrier, isn't it, that hill that goes up with the stone wall?
Does it still have the stone wall?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent. The library, the library asked for help in identifying these, so I think between the Homeowners Association and the commissioners, we might get some volunteers to do that.
Oh, I know what you're thinking, a little Ross...
Sure, a little connect.
This, this kind of feels like Ethel, because we're looking up toward what I think is Homeland up there on the left.
I think on the, I think on the left is Viscano with Nibley Park behind you.
Up from Nibley Park?
That's on the corner.
No, because then we'd be looking the wrong direction, we'd be looking away from the hill. This is the fun of piecing these things together. This house, right, not the house in the foreground, but this house up here, I just, I really, really like this house, and I've never seen it driving around, and I don't remember it from the survey, and the thing is, as soon as the plants and the trees start growing, you know, everything changes, so I don't know, but it's going to be fun to figure this out.
Maybe, yeah, maybe you can, in the meantime, email this to us, we can print it out, and as we...
We have to be a little, we have to be a little careful, because the Barrys are asking that the images be, and I think it's only when they're published, I just have to verify with the library, but they, it's kind of a credit kind of situation.
Yes.
But, yeah, I think that that could happen in the future, so.
Does that mean, Jade, that they may not be posted on History Pin or other sort of geotagged websites once we figure out where they're located?
I have a feeling, anything where they could be easily stolen.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not really sure, we have, I'll talk to the library people about it.
It'd be fun to overlay these with contemporary photographs.
Okay, here's an overview, and what's cool here is that, you know, they only took out the orange trees as properties were developed, so, you know, people still had orange groves in their backyard. And this, so this is that same street with the, with the rock wall, this is the one I thought might be Hillcroft, but I guess it's something else. I assume this is Mountain and curving in the foreground.
I think you might be right, because I think that house might be the, I think this house might be the house on the corner of Mountain and La Zanja, with that two-story...
Right. And the house across the street from it, the little one-story, is one of my favorites in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And do I have one more? That's it, I'm sorry.
So if we're right, those stone walls would have been part of the Markham property.
Yeah, and we have a great, I didn't show it because it wasn't Rossmoine, but we have a great picture of Homeland when it's pretty much done with its construction, but there's no landscaping in, and they're still working on the site.
Oh, neat.
And in our collection, we've never had a good picture of Homeland, so it's kind of nice to have that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's one of those cool things that just happened out of the blue.
Thanks. Okay. Well, with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thanks for a great year, 2012.
Yeah.
See you in January.
Happy...